Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would everyone please remain standing. Let us pray. Father God, we come no other way but from heart to heart leaning on your everlasting love. Father, we ask that you put your everlasting arms around Inkster, Father. Father, bind us together with that love, unity, and strength, that we can walk together, we can talk together, and we can hold each other up. Father, we come right now just to ask that you touch the mayor and the council, give them the strength and the courage, and be wise, Father, as to make decisions to better this community. Father, we ask that you continue to bind us together, Father, and make Inkster the city of love. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank God. Roll call.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Councilwoman Wiley. Councilman Oden.
Present.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Mayor Phil Tim Williams.
Present.
And Councilman Chisholm.
Present.
We have seven present tonight, and we do have a quorum.
All right. Everyone had a chance to look at the agenda? We're gonna add another presentation. Yeah, we got A R ready. The second presentation's gonna be Jason Dixon. He'll give us an update on the things he talked to us about before, things he's been working on.
Okay.
So that'll be B. And that's all, or am I someone's adding something else? Okay, who have a motion?
I move that we adopt the agenda with the addition.
Support. And probably move support, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes. All right. Presentation. Do we have the Al Noor Children's African Dance Group here yet?
They're coming in now.
Oh, yeah? Okay. Well, how about we do Mr. Dixon first, and then we'll come back to him. Okay? Mr. Dixon, you ready?
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So first of all, I'd like to thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to have the program on Martin Luther King's birthday. It was a great success. So we, as we spoke with the people that came, we brought Huntington Bank. So we immediately had a meeting the following Monday. And we've got a commitment from them to meet every Monday, weekly now, because of the extent of the response from your city, because they was impressed that you guys showed up the way you did, to have pretty much every part of government there. So it looks like the leadership is the way that they wanna have that continuity for a city. So we're looking at some matrix in order to make them be attracted to the city of Inkster to do a significant investment. So we're gonna be looking to see who we put together on a committee to get some things, some benchmarks. So so far, the main benchmark that we've come together with is to have five percent of the public housing, five percent from the city council to come together with their districts, and five percent from the American Academy with their student parent population to come up with those numbers to implement a financial literacy program, so we can get people educated on financial literacy and how we can get these people into homes. So right now, the commitment that we're talking about is to have in the recreation center to do a Huntington Financial Literacy Lab, so people can come in on a regular basis and get that education. To do a financial literacy lab at the public housing and a public, in a financial literacy at the school that's in the community. So once we get everybody on the same, on one accord, and the community's talking and having the same conversation, and we can drive those numbers, because Inkster does have a nice housing stock that's affordable, and they're willing to do the lending where other banks in our, in the Midwest are not. So all we have to do is put that board together, come up with those metrics, and pretty much with the five percent, if you look at, you know, five percent from each of your districts, that's a nice number for us to work with, and I believe we can drive that. The next thing we wanna do is we need to talk to the city council and who's ever gonna be on that team about what is, what's that campaign gonna look like? What can we call that, so they can get, so Huntington can actually get behind that campaign with Inkster? So now, if we have a campaign, and we can drive that and say we wanna do this for five years, and get a five-year commitment to build that relationship, that means we can have a win-win situation. So that's our update. So we are meeting once a week, so I just want you guys to be mindful of that, and have that conversation amongst yourselves, and shoot me an email on who you want to be on that committee that we can kinda have that go-to relationship with, so we can continue the continuity of the relationship moving forward in a timely fashion. If you have any questions?
Where are you meeting, to be lending?
Right now, we're on the phone. So we actually, the goal was, the goal was to meet, the first meeting in Inkster, matter of fact, that cost our day, but since the weather was bad, we said we wasn't gonna do that, and then we wanted to come up with a document with some benchmarks to make sure we had the buy-in from the school first, and then we'll come up with the same benchmark to reflect with the public housing. So we said we'd do that on telephone, and then, you know, I knew that you guys had a meeting today, so I said it's important for us to come share that energy and know that you have a commitment, so to speak, from them to say, look, this is what we wanna do in Inkster, we just have to get these benchmarks together.
How often will you be meeting, once you get everything together?
Once a week.
Once a week?
We're meeting once a week to drive this process.
You have a date for that, once a week?
It's every Monday at 10:00 a.m. And I believe that we can probably work something out where we can meet here, like a bi-weekly, since, you know, we are, you know, everybody's moving around. So we can kinda come up with that, if that's something that you wanna do, and we'll commit to that, that's fine.
You gonna let us know when you get started?
We're starting.
I mean...
Next Monday, what would you like me to do?
I'm just trying to make sure I got it right.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you already start?
Absolutely.
Okay, very good. I just wanna know, 'cause I like to attend and sort of keep up with what's going on.
That's gonna be great, that's what we want. We wanna get that buy-in, 'cause I don't want to be the one to come up with a campaign for your city. I want you to kinda, we can put some names on the board and say, this is our campaign, so we can run it congruently from the recreation center, from the school that you guys have in the community, and from the public housing, because those are the people who are gonna benefit.
Gotcha.
And then you'll benefit together as a city, and it's a good story at the end of the day. And that's what we need.
That's why I wanna get involved.
Okay, so I'm gonna do this this way. You ready? My cell number. Three one three. I'm giving my cell, three one three.
You want my cell number?
No, I'm giving mine.
Okay, three one three.
Four three three. Twenty-six thirty-six.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And then you can send me a text message, you can call me, and then what I'll do is I'll make sure that we, between now and next Monday, we'll give you a schedule. And then maybe at that time, you guys can say, these are the names that we, you know, we want you guys to be involved with, and email correspondence and things of that nature.
What's your last name, Jason?
Dixon, D-Xeln.
Do you have anything else? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Wayne County Commissioner Anderson, you got anything for us?
Good evening, council members and folks at home, and those in the audience. Just a couple of quick things. I wanted to let you know that probably within the next week or two, I should have the parks allocation for all the communities, and I'll be able to get that to you to let you know what that amount is. It'll probably be very close to what last year's was, maybe a slight increase because of property values increasing across the county. I did wanna mention, it's, I hit one on the way over here tonight, coming down, Tim, I think it might've been down, no, it was down Inkster Road I was coming down, and jarred my teeth a little, and luckily they're all solid in there. But anyway, road crew, I wanted to let you know if you needed to call the road crew and folks at home, folks in the audience, just jot the number down, it's eight eight eight, road crew. Just spell it out on your phone, and it actually has an extra letter there, but it'll go through that way. And that's the number, eight eight eight, road crew. And it's a toll-free number, and you just try to give as close to the location of the pothole as possible. If you say between Michigan Avenue and Cherry Hill, it's probably not gonna get done, because they're not gonna cruise all the way down the road looking for that one pothole. And in today's world, there's probably potholes all down through there, but, and on Middlebelt Road, and Commissioner Williams, I saw him on Saturday, and he mentioned it to me. So those are, we're in that season now, so it's gonna be a big issue getting those potholes fixed. And with that, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
The streets along, I mean, the road along Cherry Hill, from Merriman, all the way Inkster Road. Both sides of the street, that water pipes continues, I mean, it's getting worse.
Yeah, I know.
And I made a note of it to speak on it tonight.
Right.
I thought it was gonna be later, but you came up front, and I'm glad that you did. But there's a real issue there, because puddles along the curves, both sides, people coming down that street, they try to get over, they're gonna run into the other lane. It almost happened to me the other day, because it, I mean, it's just flooding all the way along that stretch.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering if there's anything gonna be happening with that.
It's not, I have repeatedly put that stretch of Cherry Hill in my requests of roads to do, and I think there's probably a couple of other council people that I've talked to about it, that I'm trying to get, in fact, if Inkster would be helpful. I'm sure EMS is having issues treating patients or working on patients that they may be transporting to the hospital, as Garden City has mentioned to me the same thing, that they're having issues of trying to start a line, an IV for someone that's injured in an accident, or they've, some other circumstances, and it presents a health and safety situation. So I would, you know, be interested in working with the administration here and in Garden City to get a letter, a resolution passed by the two councils to get that road, get it done, because it is, it's a high priority of mine. I've turned it in again this year as one of the, well, the main road that I wanna get done, is Cherry Hill, and I know it's horrendous. It shouldn't be in the condition it's in, but I'm pushing very hard on it to get it done. And if it's individual potholes in the meanwhile, you know, please let us know. I know that they'll, I have constantly talked to the DPS director about it at budget time, and I'll continue to press for it. Hopefully, we'll get it done within the next year or so.
Well, thank you. It's good to know that, you know, we got that attention.
I know it does. I know it needs the attention. I appreciate you bringing it up, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
State Representative Joel Jones.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
Administration citizens, happy to be here. Happy Monday again. Good to see everyone out. I guess a few updates I have is this, or not this week, it was supposed to be this week, but the president's having his state of the state, we're gonna be having the state of the, I mean, the State of the Union, we're having the state of the state next week, so we should have a better guideline of what we're gonna be doing out at the Capitol after we hear some of the governor's remarks. Besides that, we're having our swearing-in this Friday at the Red Complex, a day after the mayor's state of the city. It's gonna be at 7:00 p.m. at the Red Complex. We're gonna be having our lieutenant governor come out to swear me in, Mayor Nolan to be there. We have Judge Sabree coming from Detroit to share a few words, as well as a few other invited guests. And just to piggyback on what Commissioner Anderson said, Javion, too, he was headed this way earlier today, but he actually hit a pothole, destroyed his tire completely, so it's like off of his car. So I just sent him the number, actually, so he could report the pothole. It was in Detroit, though, so hey, pray for them out in Detroit. And also, Diagea Ruffin, who I recently introduced to the city and to the district, I've just found her a job working with one of my colleagues, so as some of you may know, she's a paid intern, but, you know, of course, we wanna see our young people progress, so I tracked down a job offer for her, so she's gonna be working with Representative Karen Witsett, who's actually Javion's state rep, so she'll still be relatively close by, but we will be having a new face join us pretty soon, so just get ready to meet our new paid intern, who'll be out here helping us out. Besides that, that's all I got, unless you all have any questions. No questions?
All right, thank you.
Wonderful.
All right, anybody, any other elected officials? Anybody from their office? Okay. Now, the Lord Children's African Dance Group, are they ready now? Hope she's not by herself. One woman show.
Peace and blessings, everybody. We are Al Noor African Hands, Jump and Drama Troop. We're here to bring a little bit of culture to this final today. We're gonna be doing a few African songs, and then one on the box, and we will be at the...
Friday night.
And you'll be at St. Clement's Episcopal Church on next Monday at six o'clock, doing a dance exhibition.
And we're gonna give you the microphones, you can ask that so the people at home can hear.
Introducing Al Noor again to Inkster. Mama Aye came out and started a class at one time, but we didn't get it off the ground. Al Noor, as the young lady said, opened up our Black History Month at Booker Dozier on Saturday, so you got to see the, a bigger part of the group. And these children are mostly coming from Detroit. Mama Aye's class is in Detroit right now, and so that's why we want a class out here, so that Inkster children, she'll have a troupe here available to go around and perform on this side of the state. But they will be in full force on Monday, that's next Monday, the 11th. Our calendar says 3:00 p.m., that's a mistake. They will be at St. Clement's at six o'clock, doing a dance exhibition. We hope that you will bring your children out from your churches, you'll bring your grandchildren and your children. It's mostly boys that do the drumming and the girls dance, but hey, you can go either way. There's drumming and dance class, and so we want the Inkster Al Noor Division.
What kind of forever? What?
This poem is called "Deepest Fear." Our deepest fear is not that we are inadequate. Our deepest fear is that we are more powerful beyond measure. It is our light, not our darkness, that most frightens us. We ask ourselves, who am I to be? Brilliant, gorgeous, talented, and fabulous? Actually, who are we not to be? Your plan small doesn't serve the world. There's nothing aligning about shrinking, so that other people won't feel insecure around you. We were born to manifest our glory. That's within us, not just in some of us, it's in all of us. As we let our own light shine, we unconsciously give other people permission to do the same. As we are liberated from our own fears, our presence automatically liberates others.
All right, here we go.
Peace and blessings, everybody. If you look at the outfit, her uniform, they have taken the traditional kente cloth, which is worn by the kings and stuff, and they have evolved it and made it like funky and livelier and look way more pizzazz in there. So it's a transformation going on on the continent as well as over here, and so we try to keep connected, so we don't lose anything. Thank you for having us. Peace and blessings.
Again, Al Noor will be at St. Clement's on next Monday at 6:00 p.m. Don't we want our children to talk like that? And to have culture like that? Our little boys to drum like that, and our girls to dance like that? Bring your children, your grandchildren, your church children, your God children, children you like, children you don't like. Bring them next Monday at six o'clock, St. Clement's. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, everybody, if you have a chance to look at the consent agenda?
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
And probably move to support it, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. Boards and commissions?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to appoint Ned Sanders to the, let me read that board again, Board of Review.
We already have his information, so you guys ready to vote? Get his support on that?
Support.
That doesn't count. Motion and support, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. I would like to nominate Connie Mitchell for the Cable Commission. We already have her information, I think we know her. Okay, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. Any other nominations? Okay, I guess not. We'll move on down, way down.
I got a couple questions on the...
Okay, sure. I just want to know what's going on with the Economic Development Corporation. Are they operational? Is there anything happening with that board at all? It's hard to answer. I know we have a functioning TIFRA board, and we have a DDA board. Some of the members on, I believe, the TIFRA board have kinda taken on a joint role and decided they were also Economic Development Corporation. So I'm, it's kinda, I'm not sure what's going on.
Explain "taken on." Do they have the authority to take on?
No, we appoint as a body. Only we can appoint.
Right.
But I've seen some emails where people put on their taglines that they're part of Economic Development Corporation, and I was confused by it, but I guess there was some confusion, 'cause in some cities, both groups are the same. So I think some folks thought that that was the same thing in Inkster, so they kinda put their own title on it.
We disused them of that notion?
I did, but they didn't like my answer, so...
Inkster did do that.
Separate?
Because they had TIFRA first, and then some of them brought up their Economic Development Corporation, 'cause it wasn't existing at the time.
Right.
But by all, you had to have that.
You had to have it.
So the TIFRA group became the EDC.
Did we do that by some sort of ordinance or resolution, or because...
Explain "taken on." Do they have the authority to take on?
No, we appoint as a body. So only we can appoint.
Right.
But I've seen some emails where people put on their taglines that they're part of Economic Development Corporation. And I was confused by it, but I guess there was some confusion because in some cities, both groups are the same. So I think some folks thought that that was the same thing in Inglewood, so they kind of put their own title on.
We disused them of that notion?
I did, but they didn't like my answer, so...
Inglewood did do that.
Separate?
Because they had TIFRA first, and then someone brought up the Economic Development Corporation because it wasn't existing at the time.
Right.
But by all, you had to have that.
You had to have it.
So the TIFRA group became the EDC.
Did we do that by some sort of ordinance or resolution or because...
Oh, no. They did by... Previously before, they did by resolution.
Ah, okay. So maybe that's where they got it from. Because I think most of these folks were holdovers from the last council. I don't think we appointed many of them, maybe we reappointed one or two.
Yeah, I can see like two of them are still on here from that time.
So you're saying that they had two roles?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll leave that alone. That's just strange to me.
Because I think we should know what they're doing because ultimately, we're responsible for things like that. So we should be the ones who are authorizing or not authorizing.
Well, my main reason for asking that question, and you know, it's related to what's going on within the city and where we're trying to go. Looking, going forward, we're trying to bring development into the city, so forth and so on. I think the role of that body should be standing along because we're talking about economic development. We're talking about economic development. We're talking about businesses coming into the community and working with business companies into the community. That's what raised the question because at one time, when I was with the city myself, working with community development, they was two separate bodies. And it dawned on me that why do we... Why... What's going on with it? Because I haven't heard anything from it. You know, and that's why I raised that question.
And it sounds like they did that out of necessity. Because a lot of times, we don't have enough people who want to volunteer. But it should be two separate things.
Yeah.
It's two separate goals, it's two separate missions.
And their functions are different because the TIFRA is one thing, and EDC is another.
Yes.
Right.
Anthony, doesn't EDC function as a funding board as in going out for grants and those kinds of things? That was the explanation that was given to me.
Well, not only that...
In other cities, they do.
Yeah.
But they also can play a role in terms of bringing money into the city for those kind of things. Right?
Yeah, it's important, it's important commission, if it's done correctly.
Well, there, I'm looking at the list, and most of the people on here have expired. There are three of us. Well, one expires in June, and two expire in nineteen... I mean, 2023. So if it's a board that can be made to be viable again and can do some good work for the city, I would suggest that it be reconstituted.
And I agree with 100% in with where we're trying to go. I think that board is very important. Will play a key role in terms of bringing in funds to do the kind of things we want to do under economic development.
But I think we have to really be careful on who we appoint because obviously, it needs some leadership.
Right.
Because if they've been operating as that, we have not seen any results. I guess we can put it to you like that.
I think there's been one meeting that I was invited to.
Okay. So we got to make sure whoever we put on there can provide some leadership so they can actually get some of those things done.
Let me ask one more question across that. That's with TIFRA, they had to live in the district. Okay, EDC, the citywide? Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah. So we can appoint who we want for EDC. Does not have to be the same people.
Right. Now, my next question, related to the water review committee. What is the role of this committee?
It was created, I think, last... It was created years ago when we had issues with the water meters and the billing. And so the committee was created to have some interaction with residents as to what the issues were. And then they met and then came to the administration and articulate whatever the issues might be. I remember when they appointed the committee.
Yeah, I was on that committee. And basically, we was trying to see why the water was so high and we also was looking at the meters at the same time. But every time we had a meeting, there was new information we couldn't really get a hold to because there was always some changing going on. So everybody on this... On here, it's normally on here, here.
Yeah, they don't meet anymore.
So basically, we need to make a motion to actually dissolve this board.
Oh, I was going to ask if it was still a need for...
Right. We still have issues, but I don't know if it's still need for a particular committee.
For a whole board?
Yeah.
My last question, on the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. I see that we got two vacancies. You know, in terms of their roles, do they have to represent a district? Or they can just be a member within the community that could serve on that body? Barbara, do they even meet?
I don't think so. Not...
Yeah, we, you know, we have some outstanding debt. There were some bonds that were done. So there is still that activity as we continue to pay off those bonds. I know myself and Mayor Pro Tem, I think we met once last year. So currently, there really aren't any active Brownfield redevelopment projects in the city. Part of it is because it gets back to the fact that we're talking about another captured district and the financials associated with that. So since I've been here, the two years that I've been here, it's only been related to the projects that had already been done by the Brownfield Authority. So there hasn't been any new activity in the last couple of years. Just the activities specifically related to the prior bonds that were issued and the debt service associated with that.
Do we... Is there anything that's coming down the pipe? We may need to reestablish?
There's revitalization's coming up.
And the reason I'm asking the question is because I see two vacancies. And that's why I'm asking the questions, to find out where they are and if we're going to continue to deal with them. Do we need to take a look at going forward? Identifying two people to fill those boards? And that's why I asked the question.
Sure, sure. And to answer your first question, there hasn't... Outside of one inquiry, we haven't had any other, you know, businesses or developers that have inquired about utilizing the Brownfield redevelopment. The one inquiry, Mayor, I believe, we kind of took a look at and there wasn't much viability to that plan. So beyond that, we haven't had any, you know, inquiries or anybody looking to present anything.
Great. Thank you. Everybody have anything else?
Explain the Local Business Enterprise Advisory Committee. I thought that that was a committee that was focused on entrepreneurship, business entrepreneurships, particularly for women in the city. Is that correct? Or...
Yes, it was because, now, I think, right after something that they took away. But it was only three people that was actually involved in it. But the purpose of it was for, when there was new buildings or new work coming into the city, that we would go to them and say, we need to hire some of the citizens as well. Affirmative actions were sort of killed it at that time. Because it was named something sort of different, so they had to come back and rename it.
Oh.
What was that?
The Local Business Enterprise Advisory Committee. Because everyone has expired on that. And just last year too.
Well, we have plenty of committees for people to volunteer.
Yeah.
A lot of them not even functioning right now. Okay, we have no new business. I guess we'll go straight to public participation. Officer Lebo.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hope everyone had a good couple of weeks, as well as got through the cold all right. Glad to see there was nothing major. So a few things going on in February. We have, of course, as always, the Coffee with the Cop. Will be February 13th at 10:00 AM. Applewood Coney Island, located at 28640 Michigan Avenue. All are welcome. Please come out. There's no agenda, no speeches. We just have a cup of coffee and some conversation. It's a good way to get to know some of your officers and hear concerns and get answers directly from us. So please join us. Our next February event is the Dorothy Gardner Memorial Bake Sale. That's going to be Wednesday, February 27th, 10:00 AM till 1:00 PM. But we usually run out of supplies, baked goods, very fast. So try and get there early, you know. Pre-orders available. If you know what you want, please let me know in advance. We'll set it aside for you. We'll take your money, you can take your baked goods, and we go about our business. So that's going to be, like I said, 10:00 AM, Wednesday, February 27th, in the Inglewood Police Department Lobby. Please help support...
Oatmeal raisin cookies.
Oatmeal raisin, gotcha. Oatmeal raisin cookies for Pro Tem. Going to write that down, and I'll make sure that the Commission on Aging is aware of that. Commission on Aging, they volunteer their time, their money, their everything to make those bake sales happen. They homemade most of these goods, and they're delicious, seriously. Please come out, support them. All of the proceeds go to support my activities around the city and just general community outreach. So hope to see you there. Thank you all.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wiley. Oh, no, I skipped it. Treasurer.
No comments tonight here.
No comments.
All right, I knew they had nothing. Councilwoman Wiley.
Oh, okay. Just making sure. I want to see you get slightly... Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to all the ladies that helped me Friday night. Toni Bailey, Opal Nolan, Mabel Stroman, and Rochelle Wells. You all are great, okay? Thank you so much. And I always do that, and I always forget somebody. So if I did, it was my mind, not my heart, all right? I'd also like to announce that the tour for the Charles H. Wright Museum that was to be held on the 20th has been canceled. Lack of participation. No one signed up for it, so there's no sense in renting a bus. Well, someone did, but it was only four people. So that has been canceled. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nolan.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Got a couple things. One is related to the... And I brought this up... I brought this up before, more than once. And I know it takes time to deal with different issues. But when I continue to see the same thing happening over and over again, you know, I have to bring it up. And the first one is, we continue to have the flooding. I think, mightn't recall, I brought it up a while back. Along Middle Belt, just south of Cherry Hill, at Beach Nut. Every time it rains, there's a big puddle. People have to leave the right-hand lane or into the left-hand lane to get to Cherry Hill. Continues to happen. It happened just recently again, caused all the snow and so forth. Again, I know it takes time, but this has been going on for a while. We need to address it. Along the same stretch, I brought this up before. It's lights out, Cherry Hill, all the way down the other side of Avondale, on both sides of the street. On the west side, down around the other side of Avondale, on the east side. But we need to deal with that and get that addressed. The third item, I have concerns with dumping at 710 Eastern. Now, two years ago, you may recall it, her and I, when the county was dealing with trying to help people hang their properties and so forth, we rode the neighborhood. This was one of the properties that was there where they could have taken advantage of information that was being made available and the county working with those people who had problems with their taxes. Nothing has happened, and they've been dumping there. I mentioned it, I think, to the police chief, mentioned it to him, and so forth. But it continues to happen. And then now, it's dropping all kinds of trash, rubbish, leaves, and so forth. It's in between street, the house. Then there's a trail alike between the house, that house, and the house next door to it. And it's been there for a while. But the house has been there since 2017. Whoever owned it never dealt with addressing the opportunity they had working with the county to be able to retain it. And now, it's becoming a dumping spot. We need to deal with that, try to get that squared away. I will attempt to deal with or make contact with code enforcement. See if I can, you know, deal with getting them to go out, take a look at it, and try to address it. But it's isolated.
Could you already send them a message?
Oh, okay. Very good. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, class.
Mayor, just before you do again, I'm sorry, people. But today, at our Hair Expo, there was this young lady there from Distinguished Hair and DH Natural. So she does all kinds of natural oils and things of that nature. Her name was Chantel Wesley. She was fantastic. She was like hooking hair with a crocheting needle. I know nothing about these things.
Locking it? Locking it?
Locking it.
Lock it? Oh, okay. Even knows. But she has all these shea butters and oils and things of that nature. So I said, you know, our mayor would love that. Not the hooking part. She was telling you how to do things naturally, like make your own deodorant. She was just a wealth of information. And I invited her to the fashion show because I think everybody ought to see and hear from her. But she was giving away free samples, incense, oils and things. So I got the mayor some Egyptian musk.
She trying to bomb you?
And some whipped shea butter. So I want to make sure, pass this down to him. That's what I forgot. And I reached in my pocket and I said, oops. So there you go, sir.
So I'll wear the musk instead of deodorant? Hey, Mayor, the shea butter works wonders. That's why you got an ocean on your hair.
Oh, you focus on...
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, sometime back, you heard me talk about a partnership between Henry Ford Community College and the City of Inglewood. Well, finally, we're ready to roll. Our first class will be grant writing, introduction to grant writing. So all you 501(c)(3)'s out there, the class will be held on the 19th and the 21st of February at the Rec Center from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. And they will be taught by Dr. Chapman from Henry Ford Community College. So I will be posting the flyer on Facebook, on Instagram, and I will be emailing it to those of you who I know. And when you get it, please forward it to other people. This is one of the ways that we can save our 501(c)(3)'s and not have to always dip in our pockets. I will be student number one for the Inglewood Task Force so that we can learn how to go out there. There's tons of money out there. We just need to know how to go get it. So I will make sure that that information is out. Legra Johnson from FCC is to bring some flyers here, and they will be available in the city hall here. We're also setting up ways for you to register for the class, either online or in person. So all of that information will be available for you. So I'm really excited about that. And that's only the first class. There will be one on business marketing and one on using QuickBooks, which is the industry standard now for accounting for businesses. So those are going to be very good for us. I would also like to remind citizens, please remove your garbage cans on the day of your garbage pickup by 6:00 in the evening. That's what our ordinance says. And it looks very, very bad to ride up and down our streets and see garbage cans still on the streets two days after your garbage has been picked up. It's just a simple thing to walk out there and pull it back. So please, let's make the city look great by just doing that one little simple thing to improve the way we look when people come into our city. I would also like to thank the staff and the director of our Department of Public Services. Got your streets plowed? I mean, the cities can say that all the streets were plowed. And I want to thank you, Mr. Bivins, and your employees there. For that, because that was a lot of snow. And, I mean, it was cold. And who wanted to get out and have to do all of that? But they made getting around our city very... And that's just one way that we can see our city growing and improving. There was a time when we didn't get that service. So please, these little things add up for the City of Inglewood and make us come up to be just as competitive as other cities around us. So I really appreciated that. And that is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
$50, I'm sorry, $50 for the grant writing class. And Barbara, I'll make sure I send it to you directly.
Councilwoman Howard.
Yes, hi. I don't really have anything to say, but during the last couple of, during the last week when we had the cold weather, I'd like to thank Elle, Bron, and everybody else. We had warming centers up at the Rec Center. And I'm not sure, did you guys get anybody?
Oh, yeah.
Well, that was nice. That was nice. And they had people bring food. I thought that was really nice. So thanks to everyone that stepped up and did something good. That was nice.
That was nice. That deserves a pop.
I should have went there and cut my heat off.
Councilwoman Chisholm.
I don't have anything.
Do we have TV there? Oh, my shoe.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. First, I want to start out, I gave everybody a photograph of a citizen's yard on beach west side of Middle Belt. It seems that every winter, somebody goes down that street and they try to turn the curb there and they end up in this lady's backyard tearing down her fence. So she requested that we put up some type of barrier right there because her insurance company is going to keep replacing her fence and her payments keep going up. So we can look into that. Also, on that various shoe right there, during the summertime, they do a lot of dumping. Every time we do the spring clean, we get on and we find all kinds of little small liquor bottles and all kinds of trash, McDonald's, whatever, always tossed on that street right there. I know we talked about cameras at one point, putting them up and they want us to let us know. But, you know, as I drive through Detroit, I see all these little green lights to let people know they got these cameras. So I don't think we should be hiding the fact we got cameras. We just let them know that we got cameras. And because right here in this street, here for the last couple of years, they've been dumping. And with the cameras there, we probably can catch some people dumping there, stop dumping. So hoping to get that taken care of. Yeah. If you put another barrier over towards where her fence is, because. I'll give you this, you know, the picture. Okay, great. Okay, next thing. I know we talked about this at one point, the emergency alarm system. When is it going to, because I always, when the first of the month come, that first weekend, I always hear Westlands, that's far, far away. So I wondered when we're going to put ours up.
That's on you.
We have been dealing with the company for almost a year now, trying to get that resolved. As a matter of fact, I just sent an email today asking him when he's going to start. Because we've done everything on the preliminary side of it. We've gone through the FCC. Everything is ready to go. It's just getting this guy out here to do it. If I don't hear anything back from him soon, then I'm going to kind of probably CC the mayor in on these emails and try to light a fire from that direction. Because I don't know what to hold up here, to be honest with you. It should be in by now. We started talking about this last June, I think it was. And it's been one thing after the other with this company.
Okay.
So it is not being ignored. And as a matter of fact, I sent him an email today, so I hope I hear something real soon.
Okay. Okay, my next item, the purification committee would like to use the mini purification that's on Middle Belt and Pine to store their equipment. I know housing has been used and into stores and stuff over there, but we found out that it's our building. We want to see if we can share the building or let them use the building. The purification committee.
I mean, you know, they did ask for us to return that property to, or give them the building. So we have not resolved that issue yet either. We're waiting on some survey information, some other documentation. But just to bring that up. They asked us for that building. I think one of the things were why, you know, why would we give them that building, blah, blah, blah. Because they've been using it for years. So that's something we're going to have to decide pretty soon. Basic purification needs some space.
Yeah, it needs some space. Lights, well, I spoke about this a couple of weeks ago. The lights out on Annapolis. I know those are specialty lights, but those lights are out over there still. And there's lights out on Brookside Park. In case you don't know, Brookside Park is across the street from Bay Harbor, Georgia. There's a trailway that goes through there and there's lights that are over there. And all the lights are out over there now.
On the backside beach.
But it goes from, goes from Cala all the way to down to the beach.
Are the lights out on the backside where the beach road is? So it's on beach?
Yes.
We did apply for a grant. We waiting to hear to get the rest of the lights done in the City of Inkster. But I will look into that. And I have spoken and I'm following up on Annapolis.
Now, there's one light on Annapolis. Somebody knocked that down some time ago. And the citizens are asking about that particular light. Also, last thing, on spring hill between Pine and Annapolis, I'm sorry, between Pine and Andover, there's a light pole that's been on the curb side for like two years. And it's just been sitting there.
Brown light pole?
Well, it's sort of greenish.
Greenish, yeah, wood.
Yeah.
Yeah, DT has placed it there. I don't know if they plan on replacing it somewhere, but I can follow up with them. You say that's on what street?
On spring hill between Pine and Andover. It's closer to Pine.
Pine and Andover?
Yes. And continue to stop Inkster. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to follow up with the warming center. I want, a lot of people from the community came together to donate items, to make sure everybody was safe last week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. It was definitely a big effort. And ironically, Pauline Airfat walked in tonight. She stepped up. She opened up her place of business to anybody who needed shelter. She was going between the complex and her place of business, moving cots, making sure everybody was okay. I just want to give her a round of applause for stepping up. There's a list of people who donated food and different items for folks who, you know, needed to stay at the warming center. Tanya James, sister, leader of Swap. She donated hot chocolate, donuts, bagels. Shana Garrison, she gave money? I think she dropped off a donation in case people need anything. Tanya, Tanya, oh, I already have Tanya. Cheryl Nolan was one of my neighbors. She called. She saw it on TV that we had a warming center, so she called. She's like, what do they need? I said, call out. So she went and picked up some hats and gloves and some things and took it up to the warming center. Oh, Feeds the Seed donated soups.
That is not my handwriting. That's not my handwriting.
The group that I belong to that I can't read brought soup in cups for people to make sure people have food. Let me see, Stephanie Cornette House. Stephanie from Covenant House. She brought and helped front up some goods. To relate to that, I know everybody know last Wednesday we have a power outage in the Middle Belt Cherry Hill area, which was a bit of a crisis because it was so cold. And, you know, we have a senior building there, high-rise senior building there. So we kind of went into not panic mode, but we had to mobilize very quickly. Phones started ringing about seven, seven thirty. Got in touch with everybody, police, fire, DPS. And we didn't know the power was going to be restored, so we had to make sure, we had to get those people. There's a lot of people in that building.
Yeah.
Over to the warming center. So we cranked up the bus and got ready to roll. And right when we got to do that, they restored the power. Because we had some folks who are on oxygen who need to plug in their oxygen tanks and stuff. So I just want to say thank you to all our department heads who were involved. We did a good job. We moved. As most of you know, you saw the news yesterday, we had a major fire in the City of Inkster. Strip mall on Inkster Road just south of Cherry Hill caught fire. It was a pretty big fire. One of the big ones I've seen in our city in a long, long time. The news erroneously reported that I owned the business last night because one of our former business owners gave them that information, knowing that it was not true. But you know how that is. It's just politics. Nevertheless, they got corrected. And this morning, when they ran the story, they took my name out of it because they were given bad information. It's just kind of ironic. When things come up in Inkster, they call my cell phone any time of the day to verify stories, to see what's going on. They have my personal number. Of course, I'm watching the Super Bowl last night. They could have called and asked before they ran the story, but they didn't. And that's just, you know, most times they get it right, sometimes they don't get it right. So hopefully we can get that building repaired. Those four or five businesses put out of business. You know, and the investigation is ongoing, but I hate to see things like that in our community. It's not a good look. I'm just glad no one got hurt. So that's how we're going to look at it right now. Once we figure out who did what, then we will update you as to what's going on. Black History Program, we kicked that off last Friday night. It was a great program. We had great food, African food. Sandra Wiley did most of the work, of course, with the people who helped, she named earlier tonight. We had entertainment, two dance groups. It was excellent. We had a young man, Michael.
Michael Imotet from the African History Network. And he was extremely interesting. He is going to be at the Middle Passage Program.
February sixteenth, right?
Right.
You guys have to go check him out. It's dynamic, dynamic. We had a great time, ate great food, and I think everybody took home food. We had so much food. It was great. And then earlier today, we had a Black History Program at Inkster Prep. So it was called Stump the Mayor, which is not good, of course. So we went in, they picked out some of their smartest students, and they all had questions for me. And they tried to stump me on Black History. So it was kind of interesting. They did stump me. She stumped me, yeah. Yeah, although I had to come to the meeting and rub it in. But, you know, we had some questions for them and we had fun. We had a great time. So we will post some pictures on social media. We definitely had a good time. We're going to do.
We're going to do Hicks.
That's coming up later on Wednesday. So we'll see what the kids at Hicks have.
Can I tell them what I found out?
Uh-oh, what'd you find out?
I'm old.
Yeah.
These kids had no concept of the things we were talking about.
They were like eight. She was asking them stuff about Marcus Garvey and they're like, we don't know. But it was fun. They learned a lot. We had a good time.
Yeah, it was fun when you finished.
Okay. State of the City is Thursday, Thursday at six PM at the Rec Center. Please come out. It's going to be a good time. We have three major announcements to release that day. It's not going to be long. I'm not going to talk for a long time. We're going to have some entertainment. I'm going to entertain you. I'm going to do something different. And of course, I'm not going to dance though. I'm not going to dance. Of course, we're going to have our reception afterwards, which is great food. Give you a chance to talk to a lot of our local officials will be here, elected officials and just interested folks, business owners. So definitely come out this Thursday at six PM for the State of the City. Connie Mitchell.
I'm sorry, I forgot two things. First of all, I'd like to say to Community Up, thank you for your senior program, your adopted senior. I looked up and my drive was being shoveled. And I was really surprised and pleased. I'm not really a senior, but my husband is. But that's just amazing that a group of people would do that for citizens in the City of Inkster. So I want them to know publicly that that's a wonderful thing. And that's, that's one of the things that's making this city the great city that it is. The second thing is speaking to what Sandra said about our children not knowing anything about Black History. Mabel Stroman and I are going to, starting late this week, have every week a Black History display at the Rec Center. We're going to have a display of inventions and educators and education, all the fields that we have been instrumental in in this country. So there will be displays of items and artifacts at the Rec Center. So if you have a moment to stop through to just look and see, you'll be amazed particularly about the inventions. Things that we use every day have been invented by African Americans. So that's going to be something, and I hope that Mabel and I will have the strength to even continue the display beyond Black History Month. Because Black History should be three sixty-five, not just thirty or twenty-eight. So look for that. And when it's ready, there'll be announcements going out on our city website, Facebook, Instagram, and we'll email flyers out too.
And everybody, just kind of add on to the Community Up group that I just met, all the members a couple of weeks ago. I saw some negative talk on social media because they were posting videos of them clearing snow for different people in the community. And I just don't understand it. We've got to start lifting our folks up. Somebody. If somebody's going to go out there for free and just remove snow at seniors' houses, sidewalks on Middle Belt and Inkster Road. And we're going to talk about them because they're looking for publicity?
No.
They're posting what they're doing so other people will know what's going on. And if they need help, they can reach out to them and they'll come and help them. So I think that's a great thing. I think we should help any way we can. And I appreciate the work they're doing in the community. And that's all I got, you know? Ready to go home?
Washington for a journey.
Yeah, support.
Probably move supportive discussion, all those in favor. Opposites, go home.